Good evening, welcome to the Board of Commissioners, City of Bowling Green, Kentucky. Regular meeting, City Hall, February 1st, 2022, 4:30 PM. We'll start out with our invocation, Commissioner Su Perigin.
Stand and pray with me if you choose. Dear Lord, please be with us and guide us as we make decisions to move our community forward. Be with each citizen affected by the December and January weather disasters as they build back their shattered lives. Help to heal families who lost loved ones and were injured. Be with our public safety professionals and our road crews who keep us safe day in and day out, and keep them safe, as well as our military, both home and abroad. It's in your name we pray. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Perigin. We will start with our roll call. Mrs. Jackson?
Mr. Perigin.
Here.
Commissioner Bailey?
Here.
Commissioner Beasley Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Hill?
Here.
Mayor Alcott?
Here. At this time, Mr. Mizel, do you have any comments you'd like to make?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just want to remind all those in the audience that want to make public comments at the end, please sign the board in the back corner of the room. And secondly, we need, I would ask for a late file today of Municipal Order 2022-28, if you all would give me the okay to add that to your agenda today.
Second.
Okay, we have a move by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Hill. Roll call, please.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Our first item is approval of amendments for regular meeting, January 18th, 2022.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Bailey. No comments this time. Roll call, please.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2022-17.
Municipal Order approving the probationary appointment of Kelsey McCollum to the position of communications dispatcher in the police department.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Bailey. Mr. Mizel.
Happy to tell you that we have a candidate for dispatcher in the police department. I'd like to ask Erin Holsey, our HR Director, to come up and make a recommendation.
Good afternoon. Just as we are always recruiting and accepting applications for certified police officers, the same is true for certified dispatchers. They go through a very similar process where they do have to go to an academy, and so we accept those applications year-round. We just happened to receive a couple of applications for certified dispatchers this year. We were going to be doing interviews the week of December 13th, and so we did postpone those until about two weeks ago. But I would like to present today Kelsey McCollum. Kelsey is a Kentucky certified dispatcher, and we had the pleasure of interviewing her last week. The panel was Chief Delaney, Lieutenant Colonel Chiefs Bowles, and Harold Ashley Remington, our new communications dispatch supervisor, as well as Tiger Thule. Kelsey is a graduate of Logan County High School, and she's currently a dispatcher with Hopkinsville Police Department. Please let me know if you have any questions. We do have right now, including supervisors, we have five vacancies in our dispatch department.
Questions at this time? Kelsey, did you bring some family with you?
Hi, this is my daughter Caroline.
Hi Caroline. Well, we're getting ready to vote in your mom, so are we ready for this? All right. Roll call, please.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Congratulations. All right. Municipal Order Number 2022-18.
Municipal Order approving a contract through cooperative purchase with Boyd Company of Bowling Green, Kentucky, under Kentucky State Pricing Contract for the purchase of a Caterpillar Skid Steer Loader for the Parks and Recreation Department in the amount of $64,818.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown. Mr. Mizel.
Last year, you all approved some purchases of equipment for the FY22 budget for parks. We're in front of you tonight with a couple of those for the next couple of items, but this item here is for a new, a larger skid steer for parks maintenance to use on parks projects, snow removal, trails, grounds, replacing an old skid steer that will be moved to Crosswinds, and there's a 1996 Bobcat at Crosswinds that we're going to surplus and sell. But this was state pricing contract through the state, and Boyd Company was the low bid for this, $64,818, and recommend purchase of this piece of equipment. Brent Belcher is here to answer any questions you might have on this.
Questions at this time? All right. Roll call, please.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2022-19.
Municipal Order approving a contract through cooperative purchase with Kenny Machinery Corp. of Indianapolis, Indiana, under Kentucky State Pricing Contract for the purchase of multiple pieces of golf turf maintenance equipment for the Parks and Recreation Department in the amount of $170,881.87.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Bailey, second by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizel.
As I mentioned, more equipment for Parks Department, Parks Maintenance, and there's seven pieces of equipment with this one. There's the Ground Master Toro being replaced, there's two Toro Greens Masters for the golf courses, there's two Toro Zero Turn Mowers, Toro Workman, and a top dresser that's all part of this package. These are also in Kentucky's master agreement contract, the low prices for a total of $17881.87, paid for out of Parks Improvements, or actually out of Equipment Replacement Fund. And again, Brent Belcher is here to answer any questions on this equipment.
Okay, any comments, questions? None this time. Roll call, please.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2022-20.
Municipal Order authorizing and accepting number 2022-24 for architectural and engineering professional services for downtown Transit Center Rehab and Renovation Project from Branstadter Carroll, Inc. of Lexington, Kentucky, in an amount not to exceed $145,000.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown. Mr. Mizel.
Okay, back in October, we issued a request for qualifications to do some work on our Transit Center downtown on the corner of 12th and Center, I believe that's correct, 11th Center, thank you Brent. And so, it's about a 9,000 square foot building that we bought back in 2009, needs some work, and this would all be paid for out of our Transit money, Transit Grant money. And so, we put together the request and got four proposals. These are evaluated bids based on professional qualifications, past performance, capacity to do the work, and just familiarity with the local conditions. And when it was all scored, Branstadter Carroll was the leading scorer in recommending their proposal at $145,000 to do the assessment, the design, and to manage the construction services on this project. Brent Childers is here to answer any questions on this project and the request that we put out.
Questions, comments at this time? None. Roll call, please.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2022-21.
Municipal Order authorizing and accepting number 2022-04 for Chive Lane Corridor Improvements, Phase Two, through non-competitive negotiations from Scotty's Contracting and Stone LLC of Bowling Green, Kentucky, in an amount of $1,069,673.01.
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizel.
So as most of you all know, we've been working on this project for some time, saving up money, doing a lot of planning. This is Phase Two and Phase Three of the Chive Lane Extension. This would take widen Chive Lane, starting at the roundabout there at Bale Boulevard, taking it up to Middle Bridge Road, creating another roundabout there, and then extending it and building a new road all the way over to Lover's Lane. And so, we went out for bid, we got one bid from Scotty's Contracting and Stone. That bid was a little high, we thought, higher than we would like, and so we went into non-competitive negotiations with Scotty's. And we were thankful that Scotty's was willing to negotiate in good faith, and thankful for Greg and Melissa and Kyle Hunt for their work with this bid and getting it reduced down from $5,246 to the $5,690,000 number. This is a project that is much needed for traffic flow in that area, something we've set aside funds for for multiple years now, and we think it's ready to go. Prices are not going to go down, they're only going to go higher, and so we feel like this is going to be the best opportunity we have, and we feel like this price is solid, and that this job can get done for that amount of money. And Chive Lane will widen and extend all the way over to Lover's Lane. There'll be some changes in traffic flow as far as traffic lights and signals. That's all included in this bid, as far as the relocation, all that sort of thing. But Greg is here, Melissa's here, to answer any questions you all might have on this bid and this project.
Looks like an incredible project that I know will help out the traffic flow in that community tremendously. What is the projected timeline for completion? If you don't mind Greg.
And Greg, while you're up, would you just sort of physically describe what we're doing here to the public on the television?
Sure, yeah. The first question, the completion date's set up for December of this year, so hopefully by the end of this calendar year, barring some unforeseen weather circumstances, we hope by the end of this year. And so, to be complete, yes.
Wow. That's insane.
So that's good. So, just the overall description, currently from the roundabout that was completed a couple of years ago, over toward Middle Bridge Road, currently is a pretty narrow two-lane road. It goes, you know, past Win Nelson, past Sherwood's parking lot there, down to Middle Bridge where you have the existing three-way stop. So the roundabout, it's going to make that section of roadway to match the other, it's going to be a three-lane section with a lane in each direction and a center turn lane, which will let traffic move more freely based upon left turners. It'll go up to Middle Bridge, just beyond the existing intersection of Middle Bridge, over on what is the Bale property, will set the new roundabout. It'll be a single-lane roundabout, again, very similar to the roundabout in size and dimension of the roundabout that's down at Ken Bale in Chive Lane now, the current one. So from that point, it'll continue on up and make a curve. There will be a new connector road from Fruit of the Loom Drive over toward the new connector at Ken Bale or Chive Lane. From there, the signals that are at Fruit of the Loom now, the temporary signals on Lover's Lane, the temporary signal at Middle Bridge Road will both come out, and a new signal will be installed at the new interchange, the new intersection at Sierra Seaway and the Chive Lane Extension there. So that'll help traffic flow better too on Lover's Lane because you will have one signal rather than two. Plus the increased capacity, there will be a right turn lane, there will be room for left turn storage from Lover's Lane toward Chive Lane, and then hence toward Ken Bale and Scottsville Road. So that'll cut out a lot of the Scottsville Road traffic that went on down toward Campbell Lane and made a left on Scottsville Road in front of the mall. Additionally, one thing that we haven't talked about, that's maybe not even mentioned, is there will be a multi-use path that will connect up to the multi-use path that we're going to put on Bryant Way, that'll come and it'll follow, it'll go around the roundabout and connect up to Lover's Lane. Eventually, we want to widen the sidewalk on the airport side of Lover's Lane to connect in with the hub development, and then on around to the soccer complex where the existing multi-lane, or multi-use path stops now. So that'll complete a long segment that'll get folks all the way from Caryacus Park to Lover's Lane, all the way to Scottsville Road and the mall, on a multi-use path eventually. So.
Is that the eight-foot multi-use path?
That is, yes. So that's it in a nutshell.
Well, exciting.
Thanks to Kyle and Melissa for all their work.
Thank you, Greg. Thank you, everybody. Very exciting project. Other comments, questions? Roll call, please.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2022-22.
Municipal Order authorizing a tax-exempt loan in the amount of $2,091,238 with JP Morgan Chase Bank in order to provide financing for two fire trucks.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Perigin. Mr. Mizel.
Going to hand this one off to Katie, but this pertains to the two fire trucks that you all approved recently for fire, moving them up into this fiscal year budget. Katie?
This will be paid for through the Fire Improvement Fund, and that fund does not have a fund balance in order to pay cash for those fire trucks. So we did go out to find a good interest rate, and I feel like the 1.96%, 96.4% is a very good interest rate right now, especially in anticipation of interest rate hikes that are forthcoming. So that is with JP Morgan Chase Bank, and they've locked that rate in until February 18th, and so we can do our closing by then and keep this rate.
Fantastic rate, Katie. Okay, any comments, questions? Roll call, please.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2022-23.
Municipal Order approving payment in lieu of taxes agreement among the City of Bowling Green, the County of Warren, the Board of Education of Warren County, and Tyson Processing Services, Inc., related to the construction and installation of an industrial facility in the city of Bowling Green.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Bailey. Mr. Mizel.
So we have a big project that will be kicked off tomorrow up in the trans park, Tyson, and Tyson is a $355 million project, bringing 451 new jobs to Bowling Green, Warren County, in the trans park. So we went to work with the Chamber, putting together an incentive package which included an industrial revenue bond for Tyson, which included a payment in lieu of tax agreement, which is before you tonight. In that agreement, we are going to allow Tyson 100% exemption from property tax, or in lieu of taxes, for the first five years, and then for years six through 10, we will give them 75% reduction on property tax, and then in years 11 through 20, they're going to give us, they would get 50% reduction in their, in lieu of, payment in lieu of tax payment. So that's all before you in your packets, and we'll try to answer any questions you might have. Christian Howard with the Chamber, and the ITA is also here, can answer any questions you might have about this project. But the groundbreaking is tomorrow afternoon, and we're very excited to have Tyson as part of our corporate family here in Bowling Green, Warren County.
Very big announcement, and very, we're very fortunate to move forward. Our Chamber is bringing us projects that are a dream for any community to be able to have, and we know that we have to get people back to the workforce, and we are committed as a community. I know the county, the city, is both. Our investments that we've made, our strategic plan that we've talked about, the things that we're trying to accomplish for the city are all in line with trying to keep Bowling Green as the light that brings in commerce, that brings in the economy that's needed to get that workforce going. So I just want to state, I'm proud to work with the Commissioners here, I'm proud to work with the city management, I'm proud to work with the Chamber and the county on this project as we move forward. Other comments, questions?
I'm going to echo what you said about the Chamber. I serve on the ITA, Intermodal Transportation Authority Board, which oversees the big industrial parks, and it's amazing to see what they call the funnel of opportunities, so I'm going to thank you. And it's just, it's incredible to see all of the companies that have their eyes on Bowling Green. We won't land them all, but we'll get our share, and that's just nothing but opportunities for our citizens to jump in that workforce and go take the opportunity to grow yourself and your families. Thank you.
Other comments? Roll call, please.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2022-24.
Municipal Order authorizing and approving amendments to version 11 of the 2022 edition of the Bowling Green Police Department Policy and Procedures Manual.
Second.
By Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown. Mr. Mizel.
This is an overview, or actually revisions to our BGPD Policy and Procedures Manual. It's roughly a 600-plus page document. We, I believe we sent this out to you a couple of weeks ago to start looking over, and I'd like to thank Lieutenant Colonel Penny Bowles for all her work on this document. It's a huge task to oversee this and make sure it's always up to date, and thanks to Chief Delaney as well for oversight of this and keeping it in compliance and up to date. And in your packets, you do have an overview of the changes that are in this policy manual. A lot of these are already current practices, and all this was, was to codify what existing practice was in terms of duty to intervene, the chokehold policy, things like that, things of that nature, already in place, already in practice, and all this was, was to codify that, put it in writing in the policy, early intervention policy, the no-knock warrant policy, all those things. And so this is all part of the manual now, and things that were put in place some time ago, and Chief Delaney and Lieutenant Colonel Bowles are here to answer any questions you might have on this.
Appreciate the inordinate amount of work it took to accomplish this and to keep it fresh, and we know that your work is not going to go undone because it's going to help us out as a community, it's going to help out our workforce, it's going to help out the procedures as we move forward. So thank you very much.
I'd love to echo the mayor's comments and just say thank you to the chief and Lieutenant Colonel Penny Bowles, and I know you've also worked at the statewide level, making sure that we have model policies for all of our police departments, and we're just so proud that we have your leadership not only in our city but across the state, and just grateful for how you lead in our community. And I think this is just a great example of the type of leadership you all provide, and the example that you set forward in terms of what it means to be the best at community policing, and why everyone points to you all as really being the model to follow. And so I'm just so grateful that, for this continuing, this rich tradition of always moving forward, always wanting to improve, and always finding new ways to serve our community in a better way, and to build that trust in community policing model of excellence. So just thank you both for your leadership and for everything that you do for our community.
Further comments, questions? Roll call, please.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2022-24.
Twenty-five.
Sorry, 25.
Municipal Order approving and authorizing the mayor to execute the Third Amendment to the motorcycle lease agreement with Motorsports of Bowling Green, Inc., to extend the lease term to February 28th, 2023, for the lease of four standard police package Harley-Davidson motorcycles for the sum of $1 each.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Commissioner Hill, second by Commissioner Bailey. Mr. Mizel.
It's hard to believe that this is the 18th year of this program, and it goes back to Mr. Cornelius Martin that came up with this offer years ago to our police department, and it's been an excellent program ever since. This is just a renewal of the current lease agreement, and I'd like to thank Lieutenant Colonel Brian Harrell, who's in the audience, for working this out and keeping this going. And this is just an extension for one more year. I think this would finish up the current lease that goes through 2023. And Lieutenant Colonel Harrell's here to answer any questions you might have on this.
Just one question, and I apologize, it may seem facetious. How much would the lease be after this year? If it's a dollar this year?
One dollar.
It's always been one dollar, and we have no reason to believe it won't remain one dollar.
Got you.
Phenomenal gift to our community from phenomenal family. Roll call, please.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2022-26.
Municipal Order authorizing and accepting an airport rescue grant agreement among the Bowling Green, Warren County Regional Airport, the City of Bowling Green, Warren County, and the Federal Aviation Administration.
So moved.
Second.
By Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Bailey. Mr. Mizel.
This is just a grant for the airport in the amount of $59,000. There is no match required for this funding, and just need support and approval of this grant agreement that's before you tonight.
Roll call, please.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Municipal Order Number 2022-27.
Municipal Order authorizing the submission of a grant application for funding through the 2021 Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Response Grant from the U.S. Department of Homeland Security in an amount up to $2,296,824.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizel.
We would like to apply for another SAFER grant. This is the Staffing for Adequate Fire and Emergency Responses SAFER Program, and this would be for $2,296,824, stretching over three years. As you can see in your memo, roughly 700,000 plus each year. There is no match required for this, and so if we could win this, this could help us support eight new firefighters over a three-year period. And I'd like to thank Chief Brooks and Nick Cook, our grants coordinator, for working on this, putting it together, and forgive me if I missed anybody, anybody else that worked on this. I'm sure Chief Brooks had some other staff that worked on it, and Nick, and so, but thank you guys for putting this together. We are hopeful that we have a chance at this again. We've gotten one before that worked out very well for us, and this would help us staff the next fire station, and so ask for your support.
Roll call, please.
Perigin?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Beasley Brown?
Yes.
Hill?
Yes.
Alcott?
Yes. Coordinates number BG 2022-5, first reading, non-binding.
Coordinates rezoning real estate, ordinance rezoning attractive land containing 6.75 acres from agriculture, AG Agriculture and HB Highway Business to RM3 Townhouse Multi-Family Residential located at 216 Old Lover's Lane, presently owned by Browning Investors, LLLP, and with TCP Properties LLC as the applicant.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Perigin, second by Commissioner Hill. Mr. Mizel.
This was a track of almost seven acres out on Old Lover's Lane. If you know where that is, this is a 5-0 unanimous vote by planning and zoning. There is all the information in your packets, including a map of the location, and Ben Peterson is here to answer any questions you might have on this rezoning.
I have a quick clarification question. Just real quick, I just want to make sure I understand correctly the screening, that's what the single-family homes kind of surrounding it.
Screen, yes, so there'll be a requirement for our incompatible use buffer around the, any adjoining properties that touch the property, not if there's a road between them, but it'll be the same incompatible use buffer. It's a combination of evergreen and deciduous trees, or a fence and deciduous trees, depending on what the applicant would choose. on what the applicant would choose.
Thank you so much.
Mm-hmm.
Ben, just briefly, I know that sometimes the state issues a plat. And I know that from the meeting that they had on December 16th, that they talked about that. If we authorize this, will it, I guess, how will it affect, I guess, the state issuing a plat?
So when developments are directly adjoined to a state road, then the highway department would require permit. Or if there's, they're going to subdivide the property, then the state is one of the entities that would sign off on a plat, but there will not be either of those in this case. There was some discussion about the intersection of, I believe it's Avery is the name of the road, goes beside the IGA and Lover's Lane, allowing left turns in there. But ultimately, it was decided that that was, for lack of a better term, a state issue that the state will have to address rather than developers.
And I guess just for the purposes of the public, the left turn that they had a problem with, is this a problem that they had prior to the developers coming in there?
That's a current problem. If you're coming from downtown and you turn right onto Lover's Lane, all that kind of stacking packed up in there where those yellow separators are, those yellow bollards, it's often backed up enough to where it stops traffic going right into Lover's Lane, sometimes interferes that, but especially coming from the interstate interchange left into Lover's Lane. So one of the treatments would be to close that, eliminate those left turns into there. And people wanting to turn left would have to go on down to the next road and then turn left and make their way back to the gas station. But that would be up to the state to decide when and if they would ever do that.
Thank you, Ben.
Mm-hmm.
Questions? Peterson, roll call, please.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Ordinance number BG 2022-6, first reading, non-binding.
Ordinance annexing property by consent, ordinance annexing 67.069 acres of property located at the intersection of Lover's Lane and Middle Bridge Road with property presently owned by Bale of Kentucky Limited family partnership and 5.73 acres of right-of-way for a total of 72.799 acres, with said territory being contiguous to existing city limits.
Moved.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Beasley Brown, second by Commissioner Hill, Mr. Mizel.
So first of all, I'd like to thank the Bale family for their partnership with us in this land and allowing us to build the Shavland Extension through their property. And so they have come to us and requesting annexation of that property, roughly 72 acres, which includes the right-of-way, as we start building that road and construction through there. Would also like to thank Brent Childers for all his work on this annexation, working with the Bale family and bringing this forward to us tonight. So this is just a voluntary annexation from the Bale family for the land that we just discussed with the road project.
Thank you. Questions? Roll call, please.
Perrigen.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Municipal order number 2022-28.
Municipal order temporarily suspending processing of rezoning applications and denying building permits related to requests to change land use from single-family to multifamily in tornado-damaged, single-family neighborhoods.
So moved. So second.
Sorry. Moved by Commissioner Perrigen, second by Commissioner Beasley Brown, Mr. Mizel.
After the December 11th tornado disaster, it was brought to our attention by some neighborhoods that there was concern about the rebuilding in those neighborhoods of going back and protecting the integrity of those neighborhoods. And so I'd like to thank Planning and Zoning for helping us with this. They went and looked through five or six of these neighborhoods, existing zoning, and we found where the zoning wasn't really consistent, and there were some loopholes where multifamily could go in and replace a single-family original home. So to protect these neighborhoods, we feel like, we feel, and I strongly feel, that we need to pass some moratorium, which is what's before you tonight, for the next 180 days that will prevent anyone wanting to build something different than what was originally in these neighborhoods from happening, whether it be multifamily replacing a single-family, and also give Planning and Zoning and our Neighborhood Community Services Department time to review these areas and make recommendations going forward on what needs to happen in these neighborhoods. And so Hillary worked with this, with this with Ben, as well as Brent Childers. And we feel, and I think we've talked to most of you all, we feel this is the appropriate measure to take to protect these neighborhoods that were affected by the tornado, where you have demolition going on and houses having to be rebuilt and zoning differences in these areas. So we would like your support on this moratorium, on the building permits and the rezoning applications to take effect. And again, Hillary, Ben, Brent, and even Greg may, can answer questions, but feel free to answer and ask any questions. Thank you.
I want to thank the staff for working so quickly. Commissioner Bailey and I attended the neighborhood meeting with the Covington Woods neighborhood and asked us to, you know, act swiftly to protect neighborhoods like theirs. And so I'm grateful for Hillary and Ben and Brent and Jeff, for all of you, for making sure that we are protecting our beautiful neighborhoods and that folks aren't able to take advantage of this tragedy to change the character of these neighborhoods. I definitely want to clarify, just making sure very clear about what it's not doing. So, and I'm not quite sure who is the best person to clarify these things, but this moratorium is not a moratorium on all building permits, correct?
That's correct. Sorry, I got shocked. That is correct. This does not prevent a property owner from applying and getting a building permit to repair or rebuild their single-family structure that was damaged as part of the tornado during this process. It does not prevent someone that already owned a multifamily structure in these areas from repairing or replacing that. It's allowing what existed December 10th to continue to exist. What it does prevent is someone that has a piece of property that was a single-family structure in a multifamily-zoned area from removing that single-family structure and replacing it with a multifamily structure. That's what it does not allow, and it does not allow someone to apply for rezoning to a multifamily, even if some of these, because some of these are mixed zones, rezone them to a multifamily. And so it gives us time to come up with a plan. Because we're not for the tornado, the market would not have supported some of this transition. The tornado allowed this transition to take place. And so we want to preserve as many of our single-family neighborhoods as we can because it is an ongoing challenge in this market to preserve that type of housing stock that is still in demand every day.
Thank you so much. We have the benefit of seeing the maps of the neighborhoods that, you know, we are covering with this moratorium. So where can the public find out if they're curious, making sure that their street or their home is protected by this moratorium?
We will produce those, and in a publicly visible location, probably on Planning and Zoning's website. We have some other mapping functions displayed there. Our assessment data is there, the before-and-after aerials of the tornado is there, we have some other things. We could put some static maps up there to show these impacted areas so that we're continuing to communicate it with the citizens.
So it's not just the Covington Woods neighborhood that it originated from? It is all...
It's a portion of Briarwood, it's a portion of Covington, it's a portion of Magnolia Nutwood, it's a portion of Whispering Hills and Ironwood. Cedar, I thought Cedar Ridge was already zoned. A little bit of Covington Wakefield and the 600 block down there. So it's kind of these little areas as they developed over time and how zoning changed over time in this community. It's trying to go back and address some of those.
You said, sorry, Cedar Ridge is not on this?
No, I think Cedar Ridge already rezoned several years ago as part of a neighborhood project in that area. They downzoned to a single-family zoning years ago.
Could, I don't know, maybe Ben should answer this, that if they are wondering why, what, how are they already protected from this type of vulnerability?
So the, to make somewhat of a long explanation short, the majority of the neighborhood that was damaged is already zoned, single-family. So that is all that can go back already, a single-family. The areas that we were identified that be a potential concern were, for example, a large portion of Briarwood is zoned RM3 multifamily, but is single-family in character. So one of those nice homes could be torn down and then put, let's say, a fourplex back in its place when there's no other, nothing else like that in that area. So Cedar Ridge is less of a concern, a first thought, because it's single-family zoned. And most of the other areas that were damaged by the tornado were already zoned, didn't have the zoning concern, the zoning discrepancy, if you will, that would allow a quick character change.
So if someone wanted to put a multifamily unit on a single-family plot in Cedar Ridge, already they would not be able to do that under current rules?
Well, not be able to do that without going through the traditional zone change process where it would take a signs in the yard, the advertisement, the public hearing, the recommendation from the planning commission, then the final decision come to this body. The difference in what we're talking about, if it's already zoned, you don't have to go through that process, you could just pull a permit and do it by right. That's why you see the combination of no rezonings and no permits that was requested in this moratorium.
And if a neighborhood wanted your office help in crafting what kind of, you know, language they want to use or tools they might have as a neighborhood to protect their neighborhood moving forward, how do they do that with your office?
Just call, and we would have a discussion. Obviously, right now, we're going to prioritize these identified areas, neighborhood-damaged areas, but we would have that discussion with them and figure out what the majority of people want. What we're asking people to do is you organize the meeting, don't wait on any of us because government's slow, slower than you want to be sometimes. So we're asking neighborhood champions to come forward and organize those meetings, just like the Nutwood-Magnolia area did, and we will have those discussions with them. We don't go in with recommendations on any of it. We want to be able to provide them with enough knowledge and information for them to be able to tell us what they want and what we can present, so.
Thank you so much.
Ben, I got something. I want to personally thank the mayors of Tuscaloosa, Alabama, and Tupelo, Mississippi, that spoke with us and gave us some advice and some things that they found that happened to them as a result of their devastating storms. And this organization called Leaders Lead that, do you remember the name of the lady Kathleen? Something that put that together for resources for communities like ourselves to be able...
KLC, though, they helped broker that.
Yeah, it was great. But who brought this forward to us as a potential concern. But what I'd like for you to tell the public that's watching out there is, this is not commission-driven, this is neighborhood-driven. These are champions within their leaders in their neighborhood that are leading the charge because we can't do this work. It's against statute for us to do that. But they contact you, the neighborhood, and then you facilitate the neighborhood's conversation on what they would like to see.
Sure, yeah. If nothing else, I guess, out of, maybe simplified, but just out of tragedy, sometimes comes opportunity, and it's a way for us to reconnect with these neighborhoods and just simply ask what they want. And the moratorium buys us time to do that, to craft that without having the character change while we're doing that. So that's really what this does, is just pause that potential change. And if then something the neighborhood still wants, we're going to listen to that and obviously maybe bring nothing to you other than this is what they said, but...
Right, right.
There's other things with this that gives us opportunity to talk about re-green Bowling Green, you know, re-tree, but all of that, Brent's working on a plan to address all of these things in the very early stages, but it just buys us a little time to address all of these things.
I feel like it's really important to drive home the fact that this is driven by the neighborhood.
Right.
If the neighborhood wants to reinvent their neighborhood, they could petition you for that.
Yeah.
You know, it goes either way.
So it's very simple, the easy thing to do is do nothing, it's a lot less work on all of us, but that's not what we want to do here. We want to make sure we engage, and if we bring you something, it needs to be grassroots, it needs to be from those neighborhoods to present to you all.
All of these neighborhoods have a champion identified, and they're all very strong leaders in their own communities and are communicating and getting these meetings set up. And so thank all of them, too, and your leadership here.
I don't think we're done with you, Mr. Mizel.
Ben, if it's possible, could you kind of briefly go over a situation where someone has had to demo their structure, whether it be a house or a business? Could you briefly go over the steps they need to take in starting their rebuild and what's required from you guys and what the first couple of steps would be?
Sure, and I'll ask Brent to, because it's really more through neighborhood... Yeah, why don't you just do it? That way I don't screw it up.
All right. So twice tonight, it should be an omen, I guess. Y'all are trying to tell me something. So the first step is determine what your plan is. Are you going to rebuild? Are you going to demolish and then rebuild? Repair or demolish and rebuild? And so we developed the tornado damage repair permit application that covers our building and our demo. That way we can track those and we can prioritize the review of those, both administratively and also through our finance department, our contractor's licensing. So that's the first step, is determine what you're going to do. If you need a demo, pull that permit, check demolition only, and move forward with demolition. Hire a licensed contractor. Go to the contractor's licensing board and verify through their website or call them and verify that that contractor is licensed. Have a contract, don't pay upfront, negotiate what your fee is going to be, and then that contractor should pull a building permit to rebuild that. And that contractor should guide you through that process. It should not be up to the property owner to navigate that process. That's the contractor's responsibility in this. And good licensed contractors, contractors that are licensed and members of our Builders' Association that are local, respected in the trades here, will do that for you. That is part of their responsibility. So the first thing is to come up with a plan, then it's pull your permits, hire your licensed contractors. Those permits are issued through our office in the city, in the county, they're issued through Warren County Public Works, because we have to remember that there's a portion of this that also impacted those that aren't fortunate enough to live inside the incorporated city limits of Bowling Green. And so they have to make those investments to... Zoning will still apply, and I'll let Ben talk about that. And if anybody has any questions, our staff is ready and able to provide consultation services to property owners to help them guide through. I talked to a business owner just before this meeting that was unsure about what that was going to be. Am I going to have to sprinkle a building? What am I going to have to do? Just to take away some of those concerns. That's what we're here for, is to help people through this process. We want Bowling Green to be, recover as quickly and as fast as we can, but we also want to do it the right way. Ben, you want to talk about it from the zoning side?
Sure. I think in the easy cases where you're just going to build back what you had, especially in the case of some of the businesses that were damaged, if you're building back what you had, our job is to largely just kind of stay out of the way and let you get that done. But if you're going to make changes to the footprint or the site layout, or maybe you're just starting over with a whole new use, then we'll have to go through the normal process of development review. So as Brent said, we're committed, we talk daily multiple times a day, especially here lately, and we're committed to helping people through the easiest and best path possible to get what's desired, but obviously honoring what our local ordinances are. are and, and say, for example, if you had a business on the bypass and you're just wanting to build it back, you have up to twenty-four months to build back exactly what you had. But if you're, and you don't, you don't have to talk to us necessarily. We'll still do a cursory review of the permit just to, just as a check and balance, but, but you don't have to talk to us. But if you were changing the use and building back a different footprint, different site layout, then, then you're going to need to come talk to us about meeting the current ordinances and putting in the lands, putting in landscaping and the buffering and all of that good stuff. So just, you know, you have up to that twenty-four months from December eleventh to build back what you had. So at least if that's what you want to do, at least get your permit by then.
Does it have to be completed by then, Ben, or does it have to be just started by then?
Technically, it has to be completed by then or have your permits in place with substantial progress towards construction, but obviously we're going to, we're going to be as lenient, lenient as that as you can be. I don't want to stand up here and say all you have to do is pull your permit and then wait three more years to build back because that's, that's kind of a little beyond the bounds. So if you, if you've pulled your permits and started construction, we're going to work with them.
I want to drive something home that Brent said, and I, I am serving on the contractor's licensing board, which has been a super duper big-time eye-opener. What some of this stuff goes on out there is, is definitely concerning. And now we've got an influx of a huge amount of contractors coming in and we need them. Call them, call them, make sure they're licensed and insured and in good standing with the contractor's licensing board because like most things, that goes against what you're supposed to do, these are repeat customers. They can go back and, you know, they lose their license and they can go back and get one in their wife's name. And, and so you just, you just got to do your due diligence upfront on the contractors that you're hiring, roof contractors, whatever it is, call them. That's, they want you to call them. So that's, I just want to drive that point home.
So I want to use this opportunity, Mr. City Manager. Step one is register with FEMA and also go see our friends at SBA. They are here for ten more days. So we want to make sure that we get the message out to tell people, go register with FEMA, go out to the old mall, I'm sorry, I get all my malls and olds mixed up. Go out to the old Sears out at the mall, Greenwood Mall, and register with FEMA, CSBA, for our business community and our homeowners. I know that's can, can be confusing. Make sure you register. It is very important that we drive home the message that people register. That will have long-lasting impacts in, in our total recovery from this. Is about the amount of people that register with FEMA.
That's regardless of whether they're going to use FEMA or SBA or anybody.
Absolutely, register.
Just get out there and register.
Get out there and register.
Can that be done online?
Yes, disasterassistance.gov. I'm going off memory here, I hope that's accurate. And if you need information, wearebgstrong.com.
And then can you speak, Brent, to the deadline for debris to be picked up?
Oh, yeah, Brent, but.
Well, hi, Brent.
Hey. So we're asking for folks to have that debris pushed out to the right-of-way by February seventh, which is, what, a week from today? Or that's February eighth. But anyhow, in a week, to have everything pushed out, and that's when the contractor will start making their last pass to push, to pick things up that have been pushed to the right-of-way. So that includes vegetative debris and the things that the tornado knocks down, knocked down. You know, things in the yard, et cetera. Push that up to the right-of-way, right-of-way, and we'll get that right after February seventh. So last pass, probably another week or two. That's it.
Can you remind them where we want them to put it, especially if they have a sidewalk? It might be confusing for folks where we want them to put it.
You know, the right-of-way is variable depending on which road you're on. So if they get it, if they move it up to the road, if it's on the sidewalk temporarily, they'll come and pick that up. I know that's an inconvenience for pedestrians, but during this situation, that's what we have. As long as it's close enough, that right-of-way, again, is usually where the power poles are, not always, but push it up where they can reach it with the grapple hook and it's close enough that FEMA would say, yes, that's the right-of-way.
Thank you.
So Brent, before, we're stating for everyone to get to FEMA before they close the doors on the twelfth. Can you help the citizens understand, several citizens are out there, I have insurance, I don't need FEMA, I don't need to go. Can you help them understand what that's doing for us?
Thank you. It really is a request on behalf of the community. For some of our citizens that were impacted by the tornado, they have the coverage, they will recover without the assistance of the government, and we are glad that they have that capacity to do that by themselves. What it comes down to is the more people we have register and register damage with FEMA, that all gets calculated in DC, okay? And it goes into some formula that then outputs a number that is, that impacts our disaster recovery funding in about twelve to eighteen months as part of the CDBGDR program. And that is our main source of federal funding to allow us to recover long-term from this disaster. So we have to have people register, even if they're not going to receive individual assistance. Obviously, if people need individual assistance, we want them to get that assistance out there. But even those that are fully insured, full replacement, don't need any assistance from the government, go register with FEMA because that will impact our total loss as part of a community. And how that impacts us long-term is it cuts the amount of funding that we will get in twelve to eighteen months as part of the CDBGDR program. And so that's what's so important about getting people out there. One, people need help. Two, we need this help in the community because that helps us recover and provide infrastructure, housing, and long-term stability for our community post-tornado.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, man.
Appreciate that. Appreciate all this work. Commissioners? Roll call please.
Perigin.
Yes.
Bailey.
Yes.
Beasley Brown.
Yes.
Hill.
Yes.
Alcott.
Yes. Our next scheduled meeting is February fifteenth, twenty twenty-two.
We have one.
We have one public comment. Mrs. Mateen, please join us.
Oh, they did such a good job. I don't think I have anything to say now. I'm joking. So good to see you all. Tahida Mateen, Public Information Officer, United States Small Business Administration, SBA. We continue to disseminate information, just letting people know how they can get the assistance that, that they need. Right now, as you all mentioned, the deadline is February eleventh. Just a couple of things. Right now, the, the DRC that is open, there's, there's a couple of disaster recovery centers that are closing right now, but the one at the Greenwood Mall is still open. The Western Kentucky Research Center, the Business Recovery Center is still open. Any applicant can go there if you're a homeowner, if you're a renter, any SBA applicant can go to the Western Kentucky, the Business Recovery Center, or the Disaster Recovery Center. So I want to put that out there. Also, right now.
Eleventh, or is that after, Mrs. Mateen?
Say that one more time.
So the one at the WKU Research Center, is that after February eleventh or is that up to February eleventh?
To February eleventh, whenever they close, yeah, so anytime. So I just want to say that because people think because it's a business recovery center, a homeowner or a renter can't go there, but any SBA applicant, anyone who has to ask SBA a question can go anywhere SBA is located.
Cut-off.
The cutoff is the cutoff.
Thank you.
Yes, for right now, we don't have any extension. Warren County is, we've loaned out six million dollars thus far. In Kentucky, thirty-one million dollars thus far. The SBA has provided low-interest rate loans. I do want to talk a little bit about the appeal process. Right now is the time that people, we're about a little over a month in right now and people are starting to get their denial letters. The appeal process, the most two common denials right now is credit history and repayment ability. I urge everyone, if you have a denial letter, read through it carefully, go into a DRC, sit in front of a customer service representative, they can pull your application up and go line by line. I heard a story where someone transposed a number and got the computer sent a decline for repayment ability. I'm sorry, they left out a zero. So go sit with someone, they can pull it up, they can go line by line and say, do you live here? Did you mean to put this number? Do you actually make this amount of mon, money a month? You know, do you have student loan debt? They can go line by line. So I urge, you know, those people here and listening, please don't throw away your letters, don't give up on the appeal process, go speak to a customer service representative because they have all your information and they can correct anything. Applicants have six months to reconsider their application if they need to. And businesses don't have to wait for insurance to settle. Even if you're uninsured or you didn't have insurance, go ahead and submit your SBA application because if you get your insurance check on February twelfth and the centers are closed, the declaration, that deadline has passed for that physical damage, then, you know, there's nothing that we can do at that point. So go ahead and apply. Later on, if you get enough insurance, you can say, never mind, I don't need the loan. So I just want to make sure I have that. And subject to any questions, that's all I have.
I think the deadline to appeal is six months from February eleventh.
Six months from the date, I'm glad you asked that. The appeal process, you have six months from the date of the decline letter. So.
Thank you for clarifying those things.
No problem. Yeah, that was good.
Thank you for being in our community. Where are you going home to?
Um, well, when I go home, I'll be going back to Florida. So. Hey, it was a nice day out there today, so I was happy with the, what, fifty, sixty, sixty degrees? So, yeah. But, yeah, that's it.
Happy you're here, not under the circumstances, but thank you for your work.
Oh, no problem. I still have your information. If there's any other updates or pertinent information, I can, you know, email you that as well.
Mrs. Mateen?
No problem. Thank you.
Right. Oh, it's our meeting for the evening. We'll be back on the February fifteenth. We're adjourned.